Can we get an adoption of the agenda?
I move that the agenda be adopted as presented.
Second.
All right. Our first item.
Need a vote.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, motion carries. And our first item on the agenda tonight will be our book study. And so hopefully everyone brought their books. And we're ready to discuss the first two chapters. And I put together some questions to get us kind of kicked off. But then I want to have a few minutes of time for everybody to share things as well that you, you know, just observations that you made as well, or any questions that you'd like to discuss as a board also.
Madam President, can I ask a question first?
Yes.
Could we introduce the books since we may have some viewers out there who don't know what book we read and all of that?
I think that is a great idea. So our board is reading as a book study, a book called The Governance Core. And that is by Davis Campbell and Michael Follin. And this really talks about school boards, superintendents, and the schools working closely together, and governance, and how to be good school board members, and how to collaborate well with our superintendent. So, thank you, Kim. Member Fritchy. Anything else before we kick off? All right. Well, the first question I wanted to ask was, on page 13, it talks about how well boards carry out their governance responsibilities, in many ways determines the quality of the education for the children they serve. And so I wanted to ask for what your thoughts were around that statement. Page 13. It's kind of near the bottom of the page. It's kind of near the bottom of the page.
I mean, I can start with that, just if that's the opening question, is just the, sometimes the difference of understanding governance versus operations. And the need for the seven of us, obviously, to make sure that we are maintaining a role of governance, rather than delving into the day-to-day operations of the district. If we don't like something in the day-to-day operations of the district, that's when we need to tell Dr. Buck and allow him to delegate out, to actually rectify those particular issues that we see. I also think, while it's kind of a side note to that one, is doing our best, understanding that sometimes conversations will happen without really thinking, because you go quickly, but making sure that we kind of respect the chain of command within our district as well, you know, so that we're not taking, for example, our concerns, or concerns of teachers, or staff, or parents, and stuff like that, and essentially jumping levels, making sure that we get people to their teachers, to then their administrators, to then central office, and then working through that. And a lot of that, by the way, is so that everybody has the information before it goes to the next level. Because then if I were immediately to jump to Dr. Varger from a school issue, for example, then administration in the school doesn't know the information. And so now she's going to have to go tell them anyway. And so then we're essentially just wasting time at that particular point, so.
I think that's a really good point. Board member Sparks?
I would agree with some of the sentiments that Ryan shared. I also think that when I read that, that it was important to also realize that when a board is dysfunction, and they're not doing their job, then the quality that we are hoping, or that we're all wanting to display, is not going to be there. So we actually end up hurting our children when we're not working together as a unified board. And when I use the word unified, that does not necessarily mean that we agree. But it means that we're working as a team to best serve our students. And so I think that that's also important, and that's what I saw when I said it.
Yeah, I think that's great. I agree. We've seen examples across the state where some boards have not functioned well together, and the impact that has on staff, the impact that has on the community, the impact, to your point, that that has on our students.
And I think it becomes a distraction. Because then it takes the focus off of the board and the progress of the district to what we're doing. And really being honest, we're meant to be servants. So we're here to serve. So we should be more so blending with the work, and not being the face of the work.
Good point. Vice President Fritchy?
Oh, thank you. One of the points that it makes, I think it was on page 14, it says that most effective solutions must consider diverse views, in order to get below the surface and really examine an issue before you perceive that it's essential in problem solving on our board. So I really liked that, because it really points to the importance of each of us on the board is an individual, and we each have different points of view. But it's important for us to listen to each person's point of view, and take all of those in before we make a decision. And not come in with a, just a mindset of, this is how it is, and this is how I'm going to vote, or whatever. But to just really listen, to try to figure out what is the best possible solution for our kids.
Great, thank you. Any other comments on that first? Dr. Buck?
So today, I had an opportunity to have a luncheon with some board members and such over at St. Luke's East Hospital. And I thought, the statement was made that really made me reflect this afternoon, that it's such a parallel to what we do. What they said, they kind of went through all their needs, the strengths are going on, the workforce issues they have, and things like that, and their projects they're planning. And then they said, "We exist so doctors can serve patients and help patients. Everybody else is a support service of that. The nurses are supporting that, and also doing some of the care, the tech folks are, the board, you know, everybody is a support service, so we can carry out our core of medical intervention with doctors to help out people." And that's exactly us, too. We have teachers helping kids grow into the adults that we're going to be proud to call our neighbors. And we're all in different support roles, and people sitting out there in support roles, we're in support roles. And one of the biggest support roles that we can do is providing resources, money, and time, so that our staff can do that. So I'm very grateful to be here, because I think we do a very good job of that.
Great, thank you. Okay, moving on to the next question that I wanted to talk about, on page 33 and 34. It really dives into governance. And Ryan, you kind of, Board Member Murdock, you kind of mentioned this as well. Thinking about governance as a systems thinking. And then it went on to provide several metaphors to illustrate the differences between systems thinking viewpoints of governments, and that operational or administrative kind of function. They gave the example of fighting wildfires from a helicopter versus fighting the fire on the front line. And I like that visual, because that was very, very well done. But I also, the viewing the dance floor from the balcony versus being on the dance floor. And that kind of goes to Dr. Buck, what you were saying about that support and resources, money, and time. But I wondered if anybody wanted to share candidly if they had stepped out of the helicopter with Dr. Buck and his team, maybe more into the operational at a time that you might want to share, just as a learning experience for yourself, as a board member? Yeah. Board member Marshall, thank you.
I think it's, well, I know for me, anytime we talk about data, it's very easy to kind of get down, want to get down into the weeds. And I think it, too, is in part, too, because, Dr. Buck, when you explain things, you're very, very detail-oriented, because you give us a lot of information. So it's very tempting to really want to get down, get in the kitchen and start cooking. So I have to keep reminding myself that, okay, he's just very detail-oriented, which is good, but I have to remember that I'm not cooking. Get out of the kitchen, and let Dr. Buck do his thing. So it's very, just because of the amount of information we get that's so detailed.
Yeah.
So that's kind of just the kind of check and balance that we have to check ourselves to make sure we don't do that.
I think that's a really good example. I have a conversation with myself a lot. If I have some questions, I kind of go through, okay, am I thinking about this with my governance hat on? Am I thinking about this? Okay, maybe if not, maybe I need to put that on. But I, yeah, it's thoughtful. And I think I've even had conversations, maybe one or two, Dr. Buck, where I've said, "Okay, I know I'm out of my lane here, but..." And "I'll get back in my lane in a minute." So thank you for your grace around some of those, some of those times. Anybody else? Board member Murdock?
I didn't want to, that was. I even said last meeting, I need to do that. Okay, there we go. I think one of the things, though, that is important for everybody, is we all have passionate topics that we brought with us as a part of running, right? And so, while we want to be in a governance role, and sometimes it's hard to make decisions that are going to, for example, upset your neighbors, or might even be against what you would want as a family, as an individual family, those can be really hard, right, to separate. You know, we just had that, right, with the boundary thing. And so, but I also think it's important, and I think our staff recognizes this as well, is that we do bring some of those passions, and that I think that's okay, too, right? I mean, as long as we still are running them through, Dr. Buck especially first, that everybody's going to have some of those things, you know? Like, I saw this, and this is something I would love to see our district try to accomplish. And then you work off of that. And I think that that's totally, to be expected. So I think that's important to note, too.
Great, thank you. Board member Fritchy, Vice President Fritchy?
Thank you. I think most people who know me, and who've been around for a few years, know that sometimes I have had a hard time staying in my lane. Oh, yeah, you know it. It's hard for somebody who worked in the school district for 30 years to step out of the role of a classroom teacher, or an administrator, and sit in this role, because you constantly have to remind yourself, "Yeah, I am supposed to be in the helicopter, I'm not supposed to be on the ground fighting the fires." But, you know, to Ryan's point, and some of you others, it's, you know, we get contacted by staff members, by community members, et cetera. And we want to be good listeners and good responders. And that's really important for us to be good listeners. But it's also, I think, what this points out, in doing that role that we're supposed to do, and this is what I explained to somebody, actually, this morning, someone who gave me, you know, contacted me. I said, you know, "It's really difficult, you need to understand what the role of a board member is." And that, you know, that's not my decision to do, you know, we provide the means, and they provide the way, the ways that things get done. That was our previous book study. But, you know, so have you, you know, and you go through, as a staff member, have you talked with your immediate supervisor? Have you talked with their principal, as Ryan said, and gone up through that chain of command, to make sure that your concerns are being known that way? And for a parent, your first stop is that teacher, if it's a teacher, or then on up the line to the principal, and so forth. So, you know, I think that this book just kind of reinforces that with us, that that's, you know, the way we're supposed to handle that. And then if we want to just let that concern be known to our administration, we know that we have a process that we follow for that. So, and that's what I did today.
Excellent, excellent. Board member Eslic?
Thank you. So I think what I just wanted to share is, I really appreciate the book talking about kind of the strategic focus. And I think just one thing, as a new board member, that probably anyone who's in this room, who's a new board member, has been in the past, and doesn't have the education background. I think what I've found is sometimes I have to ask a lot of questions that are in the weeds, so that I can understand how the decision that's happening at the strategic level is actually going to impact the person who is executing whatever it is that, you know, we're essentially deciding on, from a strategic standpoint. So I think it's kind of that balance, as a newer board member, to try to make sure that we're learning, and understanding what it's like in a classroom setting, or for an administrator, so that we can make those decisions that aren't absent what that impact is going to be. So I appreciate that.
That learning curve is a little steeper for us. I share that, I totally, totally agree.
Yeah, definitely.
Dr. Buck?
Couple things came to mind, so I, you know, I can remember 20, 21 years ago, being a young administrator, and going to a community event where we're trying to get feedback, and I gave my opinion early, and that shuts down thinking. And so whether we like it or not, I know I don't like it, there's perceived positional power here. So sometimes, holding our opinion to the very last, or sharing it at a different time, that way when you're with public, you hear, listen, 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 is important, because you can shut down thinking. I've seen that happen with staff before, when I was not at central office yet, a superintendent gave their opinion on a group that was doing a study group, a Pratt, if you will. And soon as the person left, they're like, "Well, I guess a decision's been made, we know we're going to do that." And that's not what that superintendent meant, but he gave what his thoughts were, and it shut down the thinking. So you got to be careful with that. When it's feedback time, it's ears, 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 and these positions especially, because if we give our thought, they're going to try to get in line. And I just want to acknowledge, it's also hard, there's many of us up here that are parents, right? And we need to be a parent, too. And, but when we ask a question, we also know that brings an extra emphasis or stress for some staff members, too. So, you know, I try to be so soft, I know you guys probably do that as well, and try to use our spouse or significant other if we have the opportunity to, saying, "Oh, man, I don't understand some math," but if I'm afraid if I ask, though, they might stress. Can you ask? I mean, it's a unique position, so I empathize with you, because we want to be parents, too, for our kid. But we also know that that staff member may be looking at us as a board member or a superintendent.
You know, Dr. Buck, I think that's a really good idea, and I'll call out and acknowledge, I really felt like, Board Member Murdock, when you were our president, and Board Member Marshall as well, I really felt like in many discussions, you would do that. You would hold on your comments, and let the conversation build, and let us fill that space, and then you would come in and weigh in. And I always really appreciated that. Because that, to your point, Dr. Buck, that really moved, removed that positional part of the conversation. So thank you for that. Board member Sparks?
I'm going to bounce off of some comments that Board Member Eslic stated, and then I'll bounce off of some comments that Dr. Buck stated. I think that that's valid, that went for individuals that do not come from the educational background, and we have other lines of work that we do, that it is, it's hard, because we don't know a lot of the process that takes place, other than saying, "When I went to school, and how does that sound when it's, you know, 20, 30 years later?" So I think that, I think it is having the balance of knowing operations, how things are working, but understanding that we're not the decision-makers of the operation. We are, now, we can identify maybe some things that we see as flaws in those operations, but we're not the ones to make the change of that operation. And us to have dialogue and discussions like we're having now, I think are important. And that's why relationships are important. Then to bounce off of Dr. Buck, you're right, many of us are parents, many of us, and if we're not parents, we're taxpayers. And so we have a self-interest of this community in our school district, and I think that's why it's so important, I know for myself, and I know many have shared that same sentiment, of getting that feedback from the outside, hearing what their thoughts are, so that it does not appear that we're solely making decisions off of our own interests, and really off of the interest for the people that we serve, which first is our students, secondly is our families, and then thirdly, it's all of our staff that we serve under LSR-7, so.
That's a really good point, thank you. Board member Foley?
So I think that we would be remiss if we didn't express gratitude to Linda Ismer. Yes. For the part that she plays. Because she very often will receive communications, she will intercept them as they are directed to the board, and when she identifies that they are operational-level questions, she can direct them specifically to who they belong to, instead of having it go to the board. And so I really love that she is able to identify that, and say, "Hey, you know, this is a transportation question, we're going to send it to the transportation department, because the board members won't be able to answer that." So Linda, I appreciate you doing that. Thank you.
And I'll tag, yeah, I agree. I'll tag on Board Member Foley, because also many times...
Jeremy, add applause to that, okay? So, okay.
And some tissues falling out of the sky.
I'll even make notes and take learning from how she's addressed that person or that ask, and just the kindness and respect, no matter what the question is, or how it's asked, that she just exudes. So I agree. Thank you, Linda, thank you. All right. Vice President Fritchy?
Yeah, I wanted to come back to one thing that Board Member Eslic said, and actually, our book on page 45, it points to one of the possible solutions to what happens when you're a new board member. And I think this is one of the things that we visited, Board Member Eslic and Foley and I had a little coffee one day, and we visited about this idea. But it says, "One of the trustee's most valuable activities is to take the time to visit schools. And a well-organized and well-intentioned visit will often benefit both the trustee and the staff, or the board member and the staff. And that allows you the chance to see how operations work, just like that tour we just took of East Trails Middle School. I think we probably, in a quick amount of time, learned a lot. You know, about East Trails, about how our middle schools are going to be set up this year for grades six, seven, and eight, et cetera. And so, and that just boots on the ground. It takes time, but, you know, my first year I was on the board, lovely Mrs. Ismer set up visits every Wednesday for me to go out to different schools. And I tried to do two a day, one at nine and one at one or two, I can't remember. But anyway, it was very valuable, because, I mean, at that point, I had been out of the school buildings for several years, and I knew that there was a gap in there, and I needed to learn some more about the schools. So I would highly recommend that, and I just think that book makes a valid point there on that.
I think that's a really good point. And I do want us, I know we're going to talk a little bit more tomorrow in leadership, but get on a work session, so that we can talk a little bit about school visits, and how we want to do that this year, and how we want to approach it. So more to come on that, and thank you. I think that's a really important point. Board member Murdock?
I just wanted to add to Kim's thing, for everybody, that getting out to the non-school day stuff is part of the fun of this particular job, especially, yeah, well, graduations, theater productions, sporting, whatever it may be. And especially getting out of the track of what, where your kids went and/or are going. That was one of the things I struggled with the first year, is I ended up going to lots of Lee Summit West things, or I would go to a lot of, at the time, Summit Lakes things, because that's where I thought we were going to be, right? But then over the last couple of years, you know, going to a lot more of the things outside of that particular area of the district, and trying to make it over to things, whether it be at Meadow Lane, or whether or not we get over to Bernard Campbell and do things there. I think that that also is one of the best parts of this, so.
Great, good point. All right, any other comments around that area? And I'll jump, and Kim, that's so funny, because I had highlighted that part on page 45 as well. But on, see, great minds, yep. But I want to go to page 41, where it talks about deep learning. And this kind of goes along with, Board Member Eslic, what you were talking about, that importance for us, and Board Member Marshall, the importance of really looking at the data. Really thinking about, we're making decisions based on quality information, evidence, and data. And then near the bottom of that page, it starts to discuss also about the board as change agents. And that's something that I really take to heart and think hard about, and I know many of us, Roderick, you've mentioned it, Board Member Foley, you've mentioned it, that importance of us as board members being transparent, and engaging our community in discussions, and in listening sessions, and really being thoughtful around our talking points, or things that we're discussing, especially as we're looking, you know, into the next 10, 20 years, the next item on our agenda that we're going to discuss. So just that concept of change agents, any thoughts around being a change agent as a board member? Board member Murdock?
First, I'm not a huge fan of the term "change agent," so I'll just start with that. I think that you can understand the complexities of the time, and react to information, and still be making the best decisions you possibly can. Maybe we've defined the word as a society right now, to where it brings along sometimes negative connotation, even though it probably is a positive, okay? So we could probably say it that way, maybe even more. I actually thought that the graph on 43 is where the focus, right there is, you know, we have a lot of people who tend to, and I absolutely understand what they are saying when we talk about, "We want reading, writing, and arithmetic," right?
Mm-hmm.
But that's not what school is anymore. And it wasn't even school that, school probably even when I was finishing school, it had already started to, the dynamic had changed quite extensively. And so while we want to teach those things, the components of the rest of our society dictate that we have to bring everything else along with it. And I think that this particular part of the chapter was good, because it, more than anything, illustrated the need for those interpersonal skills, communication skills, people like to call them the "soft skills," but I think there's even more than that that we could say to it. And so I thought that that was really, really important, that we understood everything else that goes along with teaching just subjects. There's so much more to it than that.
And I think that's a really good point. And maybe instead of change agents, it's just that thought of, because it kind of reminds me of, you know, when we take a vote, and maybe we didn't vote the way the, the way the rest of the board voted, but it's being able to go out and champion whatever that final decision was as a board, and moving our district forward. And it's just that concept of, maybe champion is a better word than change agent, because that's a little bit more what I was thinking about. But I think you make a really good point. Board member Marshall?
That's a very good point, Board Member Murdock. The one part that I highlighted on page 41 is a portion in the paragraph where it specifically states that, you know, "Becoming literate and numerate, and graduate from high school even post-secondary institution is no longer sufficient for living effectively in this complex, unpredictable, and in many ways, dangerous society." And then it just, you know, is very blunt, says, "If you're good at academic schooling, are you automatically good at life?" And I think that resonated with me, because having been able to have the opportunity to see how education systems are in different countries. Reading, writing, and arithmetic, yes, is very, very important, but those life skills and interacting with one another, once you get out into the environment, is a whole different topic. And, you know, getting very intentional on how we... And, you know, getting very intentional on how we teach our students that part of life skills is, it'll make the difference when we talk about global competitiveness and things like that. So I think that that is just as important and in some cases even more important than being academically stewed.
Good point, good point. Board Member Sparks?
While I can truly say that I can find it difficult to champion something that I maybe don't truly support, that's just being honest and transparent. I think what, when I read that piece and heard change agent, what stuck out for me was being flexible, and that's what I wrote down. Because so many times we can be so stiff-necked that we don't understand that in doing this job and doing this job well, you have to be willing to be flexible, you have to be willing to be, to learn from others. And then, to your point, with the learning, with being flexible, then it brings about a change that we can then accept and then move on.
And even champion, right? Good point. Yeah, yeah. One thought I had too was in reading that, and, and this is just a rhetorical question that maybe we keep in the back of our minds, or I keep in the back of my mind is, what do, what do we need or what do I need from Dr. Buck and his team to be able to make decisions and be change agents or champions around some of the things that he's, you know, he's bringing forward as a recommendation? And to keep asking myself, what do I need? What data do I need? And honestly, for our next item on the agenda, that was some of my thought processes as well. What data do I need to get where I need to go? And, and I think that's just a question I wanted to throw out on the table. So what other questions did you guys want to raise or talk through around these first two chapters? Dr. Buck?
So on page twenty-three, they have the guidelines for serving on the board. I just want to point out, the first five are exactly five that you see in Team Lee Summit. Number six is probably not one they talk about, but it's probably embedded. But the first five, your Team Lee Summit is modeling those very same things. Guidelines for serving on Team Lee Summit is very similar to see guidelines in serving on the board.
That's great. Yeah. That's excellent. Board Member Murdock?
My, my overarching thought for the first two, two things here, for the first two chapters was this, is that we do not, as a group of seven, ever get to sit down and have a discussion, which I think in a lot of cases would be very beneficial on a multitude of topics, for us to literally be able to sit around without having to call a public meeting. I understand why you do that, so I'm not questioning that part. So it's hard for us to have discussions as a group. And so what resonated with me and was just the brief mention of striving for common ground. It can be more difficult than people understand to find common ground on certain issues, but it always should be something that we are striving for. And you know, back in our summer retreat, we talked about, you know, that we're not saying that we're necessarily going to compromise on things, but that doesn't mean that we still shouldn't be, as a group of seven, striving for common ground, especially as we're bringing issues to Dr. Buck and as those recommendations are coming forward. There still is the idea of building, building consensus and finding the common ground, even if then a vote is four to three, you know? That should always be one of our focuses. So that's kind of what I took from it.
Excellent. Any other comments or questions we want to discuss together? Okay, well, we'll go ahead and wrap up. So we'll look at the next two chapters, not at our next work session, but at the next one in September. All right. Thanks very much. This, I feel like this has been a good discussion and I've really enjoyed reading so far the, yeah, this book. All right, moving on on our agenda, our next item will be our presentation. And Dr. Buck, do you want to kick that off?
Yes, so I, I have five or six slides here. It's going to be short, so that way it will turn over to the two men in suits over there, Nathan and Steve, and I answering questions, and then we want to get out of your way and so you guys can have that discussion you just talked about. All right, so first, I, I think I'm going to skip to slide three of the why we're talking about this, and then I'll go back to slide two on some options you have. So we, for quite a few number of years, were the number one in the metro area for starting salary. We are now sixth. If you look at Masters at step fifteen, we are seventh. You can see the districts were behind there. The district to the north of us has now got up to forty thousand this year for the first time, so they're, they're right on our heels. Our base hasn't changed since the fall of two thousand nineteen. Now, part of that is we've had phase one and phase two of these last two years, undoing what happened with the freezes, still, but still being in, within board policy of when you were onboarded. So, so part of that is we did put significant money involved in those two things. But we haven't changed the base since two thousand nineteen. We know that when we look at the formula-wise, they always base your, your inflation on your December year at the end of the year, so we were at seven percent last December. Of course, we're above that right now, so inflation, so even the dollar amounts our staff is making doesn't go as far, we know that in the rest of the world as well. And then the state funding formula has been flat for many years. In the last six years, it's, it's changed just a little over a hundred thousand dollars a year on average. So we, we are not getting more state funding. A raise, to raise teachers and staff salaries significantly will have to come from, from local. So we do know that predictions holding true, that we'll be able to do something to the base, or however the Team Lee Summit wants to do it, for our staff and for the next school year, not for the one we're getting ready for, for the next one. All right, but if you want to get up to where North Kansas City is or do something significant, that's going to take doing something different. So there's a couple of options for doing something different. You could just do a, you know, straight-out levy raise, which I did not put on here because I don't think that's the appetite right now when we have high inflation. You could do nothing, and you could see what your bonding capacities are in twenty-five and thirty. There's nothing magical about twenty-five and thirty, just picking five years out from the last one, five years after that. You could raise your operating levy with a promise to then lower the debt levy at the same amount, so it'd be a no-tax rate increase, and you could see what ten cents and twenty cents would be for operating levy and support. If you do a thousand-dollar raise at base, it's going to be in the three million dollar range, Nathan can quote the exact dollar amount, so you, you can kind of see what would, you could afford. By the way, when you do a thousand dollars to teacher base, the, that, the veterans get more money because it's indexed by percent. So a thousand dollars at step one, BS one, is about eighteen ninety on the bottom right. And then, or you could get a full waiver and prop C. So as you heard in the June, there's only nineteen districts that turned down from their voter-approved tax rate and collect less because they don't have a full waiver or prop C, and they're not hold harmless or at two seventy-five. So we're one of those, and so if you did a full prop C waiver, we think this next year it'd be about four million dollars. It was in the three million dollar range this last year. So those are your options you have. Really, it's two options if you want to do something different with a striated example, so you could see, you could do a different amount than those amounts. If you borrowed less in twenty twenty-five, by the way, that means there's more money in twenty thirty, okay? Those numbers on bonding capacity are based on a seven percent increase in AV for next year, and that's based on what Stifel's hearing from the county. We were about seven percent this year in a non-assessment year. And then three percent growth every year afterwards. One of the questions you might ask was, what if PRI lands starts developing, we get a lot of people faster than we thought we would? Well, AV will also go up faster. And while your operating levy is capped at that, CPI or five percent, whichever is higher, actually it's CPI or cap at five percent if you go above that, your bonding capacity doesn't. So the bonding capacity, if you grow enrollment really fast, those numbers also grow up bigger. So just letting you know that, because you can borrow fifteen percent of your assessed valuations, which you can ask voters to borrow. A lot different than Kansas, where you can borrow a lot more money than that. Missouri is actually very conservative in what schools can borrow. So that's kind of the why. Well, my clicker, there we go. In your packet, you have materials from Stifel from the summer, includes ballot language. You have some internal data that I provided, so you can see where our salaries have been over time, or you can see our teachers are getting more veterans, so I tease that we have the great retirement coming. We, you know, you can see various things in there. Also, there's sample ballot language in there. And then I also added a new document today, it also has a sample ballot language, but it also has some other information in there. And I just wanted to show you that, yes, the twenty twenty bond issue passed during the pandemic at a record rate. We tend to have a good chance of passing bond issues in our past, or they are, but you can also see the dollar amounts have always been under a hundred million until we got to twenty twenty. Now, we know cost of construction's gone up, so that's part of it. But you can see that, you know, we had been running many, many smaller numbers before that. So that is it. I'm trying to turn it over to you guys so you can ask questions, and then the three of us get out of your way and let you guys have a conversation, hopefully come to consensus. You wouldn't vote on a ballot language until December or January. You have till January twenty-fourth, I believe it is, and we have a board meeting January nineteenth to vote on a ballot language. But if we want to be successful, we need to know the direction now because we need to start working through Business Roundtable, CAC and others, to educate and then have a committee forum, and a committee actually runs the campaign, because while we can say vote, a committee can say vote yes. All right, so you, our employees can't go out and say please vote yes on this. They can only say vote, right? That's kind of the, the role of the committee. Now, we can participate in committee, but that's the committee's role. So there you go. We'll turn it over. If you two want to stand up to the podium, and we'll answer questions and take them as we see who's best equipped for it.
Thank you, thank you. Dr. Buck, you said that LSR seven is one of about nineteen districts around the state of Missouri without a full prop C waiver. Can you explain to us why a district wouldn't have a full prop C waiver? I mean, you weren't around when our district decided to go half of it, and I was as a teacher, but I didn't understand it.
So in the nineteen eighties, I don't remember which year, prop C was created, and it was a one-cent sales tax. And that sales tax collected statewide, put in one pot, and it divvied out base on average daily attendance throughout the state. Hancock Amendment came in, said, hey, that's just got a ceiling on it unless you ask for a waiver, so districts start to ask for waivers. Eleven percent of districts, so more than nineteen, do not have a full waiver. Eighty-nine percent have asked voters for a full waiver and received it, or one of them has for a partial waiver. But out of that eleven percent, many of them, it doesn't impact them because they're either at a low tax rate of two dollars seventy-five cents, so they can't go, you know, they don't go below it, or you're hold harmless. So think of Kansas City Public. Kansas City Public's hold harmless, they've shrunk quite a bit in enrollment, so they're guaranteed to have a certain dollar amount based on a, on a prior year, so they don't take that cut as far as state funding comes in. But that also affects prop C, they don't take that cut too, so they don't have to roll back. So according to Stifel, that's where we get to nineteen, they said the, after they did analysis, there's only nineteen districts that do not have a full, they have to roll back their levy based on not having a full waiver of prop C. I do okay, boys.
From a staff perspective, what kind of, what are our demographics in our staff who are step one, range one?
I don't have it off the top of my head, but I can tell you that last year ago, our average experiences, a little over sixteen years of experience, I can tell you that when we hired prior, I would ask new teachers, raise your hand if you're a first-year teacher, and it would just be handful, five, ten, not many. We do, we do hire a lot of veteran teachers.
It's one of the reasons that, and I certainly hope people don't take the comment the wrong way, the starting salary can be very misleading, right? In terms of a district like Lee Summit, where we have primarily veteran teachers incentivizing those teachers to continue their education and the retention of the teachers as they progress through the district is where the salary charge makes its biggest impact. Would you agree with that?
Yes, and I think what we're lucky here, since it's indexed, veteran teachers get a bigger raise when you add to the base. It's not just a thousand, it trickles thousand everywhere. They get, since it's two and a half percent, two and a half percent each step, most districts don't have, well, I wouldn't say most, many districts do not have that indexed, and so then districts got to pay attention to, all right, do we need to give a bigger raise to veterans because a thousand dollars at that end is a smaller percent increase than it is to the base? But that's not the case for us. So right now, two and a half percent is a step. That costs us about four million a year, and that, I never want to freeze salaries. I've never been part of a freezing salary in twenty-seven years, and, because people don't forget it, so just let you know that, if you ever think about that. But we think we can do above and beyond that, but if you want to do something significant to get back up where North Kansas City is and be a leader in our area, and also keep up with inflation for our staff, and it's not just teachers, we have twenty-one custodial and opens right now, openings right now. We had a hard time filling all of our food service positions last year. We had to move to a, a different nursing model where we have RNs everybody, because we couldn't find LPNs. So, you know, you saw what we did significantly for the bus drivers, you know, I guess about thirteen months ago. You know, that was a significant raise for them because we were having a hard time. It's not just us, we know that. Like I said, I think St. Luke's East said they had thirty-five percent openings in their nursing staff. It is, I know, everywhere. And thankfully, we're doing well on the certified side. When we went to the commissioner's conference beginning of the week, and some of these guys were in that session, you know, some districts are in there, they're, they have significant teacher openings. We don't. But we also have to be prepared because we also have that potential with retirements coming forward and less kids going to college to become a teacher.
The other two things, we know that the foundation formula has stayed flat. Judging by what has been going on in Jefferson City, I certainly don't anticipate a huge change in that in the coming years. I would be shocked, let me rephrase, if we were to do that. And I think that sometimes that that becomes really difficult because people see news stories coming out, you know, of the governor is going to raise salaries to thirty-eight or forty thousand dollars, and we sit here in Lee Summit and we go, I mean, thanks, but, right? I mean, and by the way, our first-year teachers should be making more than that anyway, if, if at all possible. So if we don't do anything from, we, we can recognize that the foundation formula is going to stay flat. We also, though, Dr. Buck, need to watch out because we might only have the one time, maybe a second year of the actual transportation funding, right?
We were assuming one year, but the governor did tease Tuesday that he's open to keep it, and we were all very excited to hear that he is behind that, but he doesn't get to say that. He gets to vote veto or approve or sign off on whatever the legislators put in.
I heard, I heard that too, and I, I just put it in my back pocket for, for that, right? I mean, so my question then becomes even around all of the different options and stuff like that. Even through this year, what are we seeing, not only from a Kansas City region, but from a state perspective in terms of districts trying to bump employees? I mean, we're seeing that, certainly in the private sector, people are trying to keep up with inflation, right? In terms of the raises, what are we seeing from an educational perspective, even getting outside the Kansas City area?
So I'll speak to the Kansas City area, I don't know if I know the whole state area, but you're seeing people do the bond transfer. So most districts have already taken care of the prop Cs, so they're not asking voters for that. You had twenty cents in North Kansas City, they made that transfer and gave significant raises. That's what Blue Springs did a year ago, that's what the city of Lee Summit, by the way, just did too. You know, when Ray Peck did theirs, they did a transfer and an increase, both, and it was significant, seventy-five cents, I think, total. So it was significant investment into their, into their salaries and everything else. Belton just did this. So we're seeing people go to the voters either for a tax rate increase or for a bond transfer, that's how you're giving the raises, because it's sustainable. So like, you're seeing it with the, with the governor did with thirty-eight thousand, what I heard this week at the commissioner conference is it's mostly smaller districts that need that. They're doing stipends instead of a salary schedule and trying to see if that'll float because there's no guarantee the, the seventy percent match a state's doing to get to thirty-eight thousand will be more than one year. So they're giving stipend to get you to thirty-eight for one year, and if it goes away, then it would go back down, because they can't afford it unless they had voter approval.
And, and then my last question, and then I'll turn it over to other people here, is if we did a bond transfer, we're at a dollar seven right now, correct? Right, that we're on our debt service? And we know what our bonding capacity might be coming up here in the future. Based on our long-term facilities plan, do we have an anticipated number that we are hoping to bond for in the next, when we go for another bond? Because I think that that makes a big difference on how much we would want to, if we wanted to propose rolling back the, and doing a bond transfer into our operating levy, that makes a big difference, right? If we're going to say in twenty twenty-five, we only need eighty million of a bond to take care of Greenwood or Lee Summit Elementary, those kinds of things, and in thirty, we want to do a hundred and fifty, well, we probably could roll the bond twenty-five cents back, right? And be able to make payments effectively and still do no tax increase. And be able to make payments effectively and still do no tax increases. What, what kind of information do we have on that?
So based on our long-range facility plan, we would anticipate, I would anticipate, based on a long-range facility plan, I would anticipate us going to the voters in 25 and asking for around 130 million. As you've seen from the documents, you know, we've, just for numbers sake, put out 200 million. So that, that obviously well under that $200 million mark. And then in 30, we would still have that bonding capacity to go out and get what we need in 30, which I think, you know, inflation is the wild card here. But probably around that 150, 175 million at that time. It all depends on what we do with our, our long-range facility plan, and we do need to update that and refresh that.
And, you know, we'll, we'll do a process again and, you know, when community members give input, we may have different wants and desires than we did last time. So if you think about what we did at Mason, that was, you know, in the mid-teens. I don't have the exact dollar amount off the top of my head. That's probably more like a $30 million project right now. That's, that's how things changed, how fast they've changed. Now, are they going to come back down when, when inflation comes down? We don't know. So there's a big unknown there as well. And I know I put three elementaries in there, I think Westview also was considered in there, I should have put Westview in there. So there are four elementaries that were considered and didn't make the list last time. We know SDA needs to expand, those are probably the biggest pieces. And then we probably need to think about land acquisitions. We're down to 19 acres of our 645 acres that we're not currently using.
And that $130 million number that I've mentioned in 25 is a 10% increase from what we had initially set aside in 25 of 115 million.
Before we leave, Board Member Murdock's questions, because one question that you asked, and appreciate the answer because I think that was what you really wanted to know around what are other districts across the state of Missouri doing from a bond perspective, from a, right, different ballot issues? But I think my question around that is, are we seeing right now in the state of Missouri, and this was the 2122 data that you had shared, we're 37th across the state in salaries, for staff salaries. So what I'm hearing you say is that we're seeing districts all across the state of Missouri figuring out any way, any possible way to increase their staff salaries. And we agree, I think philosophically, or I'm throwing it on the table, we agree that we want to see our staff salaries increase, not just for inflation, but also to make sure that we're paying our, our district, we're moving up from 37th. Maybe we've lagged in the past, but we want to move forward as a district supporting our staff around that.
Salary is, as well as benefits, it's an attraction-retention policy. And we're the fifth largest district, but we rank 37th in pay. That, that's what I want to, to address. And it's, there's many spots within our, our district that we're seeing it. So if I look at assistant principal, we're seeing other districts pay a lot more for assistant principals, for example. So that's why, you know, it's not just teachers, it's all of our staff. You know, we, we need to keep up with our neighbors.
Thank you. And Board Member Sparks, thanks for letting me sneak in that question, thank you.
I'll forgive you this time. I, so I will say that it was, first, let me say that I agree with the sentiments, that I personally think that we need to make sure that our teachers and staff getting paid not only what they deserve, but at a great level, so that they know that we appreciate them and the work that they do for our students. It was also great to hear the fact that we're not just looking at teachers, but we're also looking at custodians. We're also looking at food services. Because without those other departments, we, it's, it's hard to, you can't function as a district. And so that also is a, a piece that I greatly appreciate. My question is, how does this impact our families? And especially if we go with the full waiver? And then my second question is going to be, what does this process look like? I'm, I'm, I'm used to plans being already developed and ready to go, this is what we want to do. And then it being presented, then getting our feedback, and then also taking posts of other areas and other stakeholders. So if you can kind of just set to me what this path would look like with us doing anything other than nothing? So what does that path look like? And then how does this impact our families?
So from a financial standpoint, if you look at the levy transfer, whether it's 10 cents or 20 cents, it, it has zero impact on what the total levy would be. Because essentially you're asking to raise the operating ceiling either 10 cents or 20 cents. And then you are agreeing to roll back the debt service to either 97 or 87. So the corresponding total tax increase then remains unchanged. Over time, then, obviously, it depends on what assessed valuation does, what the CPI does, and all those factors. I, I do think it's worth noting as part of that, it wasn't too many years ago where the total tax rate here in Lee Summit was over $6. The total tax levy was over $6. And so what you've seen though, with the reassessments, the operating is always subject to the Hancock Amendment, so it gets rolled back. And so this past year, we were at 548, next year will likely be closer to 530. But the debt service has remained $1.7 through that time because it's an ad valorem levy and it's there to only pay debt on bonds that you take out. So that's why we are in a position now to even, to consider this. Because the total tax rate has dropped, but our debt service has stayed the same. So our operating levy has continually been forced down. So with the transfer, which is the easiest way to explain it, but really you're, you're raising the operating ceiling and you're lowering your debt service, the corresponding amounts. With the Prop C waiver, it's approximately 15 cents. And I say approximately because that changes every year based on a calculation that's done with how much Prop C revenue you've received, how much state assessed railroad and utility money you've received and what your assessed valuation has done. This year, it was under 13 cents. That's what the rollback was. But next year, it's looking like it'll be closer to 15 and a half cents. Some years it can even be higher than that, some years it's lower. So 15 is a safe average. So looking at that on the, the slide that we had in September, we did a comparison of what the tax rate did. And at the time, last year, it was, it was virtually unchanged. But what 15 cents does on a house as a market value of term 55,000, which was the median house value in the city of Lee Summit, 15 cents is $72.80 a ye- Thank you, I was doing that from memory, 72.68. That's what a 15 cent increase would mean for the average house. And that is what a full Prop C waiver would do, because you're not rolling back that amount every year.
It, it is, if you hit your board, no, I think you got an email from, I don't know if it's in the board questions. Okay, all right, it's an additional slide link. So I want to summarize what he just said. You have a voter-approved levy that we roll back because we don't have a full Prop C, but voters approved a certain levy. If you have a full waiver, you don't have to roll back. And so you, thus you get to keep the voter-approved levy that we, we have, we have a ceiling for that. It would be for average house of 255,000 in our community, which was the average last September, probably higher now, $72.68. That's the impact it would be for a year. So that, that's, that's the impact for the Prop C waiver. And just so you know, if you think, oh, my house went up so much in assessed valuation, we're also, you know, if you think of 2019, I think the assessed valuation in this county went up 16%, if I remember right. We did not, our CPI was, I can't remember what it was, less than 2%. So our collections only could go up less than, then at less than 2%. We didn't collect 16% more taxes because AV went up high. We are capped at inflation rate or 5% if CPI is, inflation rate is higher than 5. All right, so many years, we're under 1 or under 2, and that was the case in 2019. So while it was wild to see the 16% number, we didn't see 16% increase in local funding.
A, we're going to pay less back on our debt and shift that money over to operations so we have more money in there. Is that, that's all a true statement? We're going to slow down the way we're paying down our debt, which is why that impacts what we can do in a bond issue in the future. And we're going to shift that money over with voter approval to pay more in our operations and fund salaries, right?
We have a debt service schedule.
Right.
It's like our, like your house mortgage.
Right, your amortization.
And we can, we can look out years in advance to see what our, our debt payments are going to be. And we're obligated to pay those debts.
Right.
What this means by lowering that debt service levy is that we'll just bring in less. We have the beauty of reserves as well. And so, and as you look at the analysis in all these scenarios, we will always bring in obviously enough to pay down our debt. There are times we may have to dip into our, our debt service reserves, not our operating reserves, but our debt service reserves to make those payments. But in many, many cases, and all, all but maybe, I think, two or three years that I saw, looking forward 15 or 20 years, we'll be able to obviously make those debt service payments with what we're collecting, as well as from time to time, have to dip into our debt service reserves, not our operating reserves.
Okay, thank you, does that help as well, great?
So your second part of your question, or do you have a follow-up on somebody?
So since we're at, so since you said that we would be at a cap, we did not see the 16%. So what would be our worst-case scenario impact to our families, since we're capped?
For, it depends on how much you own, right? Right now, we're thinking it would, a $255,000 house would be $72.68.
This would be that worse, okay.
Board Member Esli, do you want to, I think, actually Board Member Fritchy was next.
Okay, that's fine, mine was more of just a continuation of the conversation.
Go ahead.
Because you were talking about the assessed valuation and I just, well, let me start by saying, I'm, I just want to reiterate what Board Member Sparks has said and some other board members, that I'm very on board with making sure that we keep our teachers' salaries competitive. Very supportive of that. That being said, I just want to express concern that we have coming up an assessment year of 2023, and I believe it's 2023. So I'm concerned about our families, because you brought up families, you brought up the community. So our community is already very likely going to be hit with quite a bit of additional tax burden from the increase in property values. So when I look at our scenarios here, I very much lean toward the operating levy, debt levy transfer in lieu of, I, I know it sounds like a small amount to say, you know, $75 a year on the average house. It's more just, can we live with the budget that we have and reallocate the dollars and still achieve what we're trying to get at without, again, kind of hammering our community members with more taxes? So I'm, I'm not asking really a question, it's more of a, you know, kind of adding to the conversation of the concern of where kind of my thought process goes. And, you know, when I look at, I don't have the presentation in front of me, but during, if you all remember during our board retreat, Stiefel did our, a presentation. And one thing that really stuck out to me is when they presented what you were talking about, the, kind of the amortization schedule, for lack of a better word on the bond terminology. The bond funds and everything that was available to the district was very healthy as they forecasted it out. So to me, that just said, okay, well, we have more flexibility in that bond, or that bond levy fund, to be able to reallocate the dollars. So that's kind of my contribution to the conversation, and some thoughts that I had. No real question, though.
And I will, and I will agree with what you said there. And we've seen a success rate of 100% in the metro area on bond transfers, including the city Lee Summit. So that is definitely true. But we want everyone to see that that does lower how much you're going to be able to borrow seven, eight years from now. So just want to make sure everyone's comfortable. I will say those numbers you see in there, though, are conservative. Because if we get big growth, that changes. If that billion-dollar development happens on, you know, over here on 470, next, next to Unity Village, that makes a big difference. So that number goes up when those things happen.
Can I comment back on that, is that okay? Okay, so on the development aspect of it, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, because I know that we've seen some presentations on what that could look like. And there's more of a multifamily tone to that. And I think the numbers that you've discussed before is one student per 10 households in a multifamily. So maybe the impact to the district would be a little bit lower when you look at how many units we're building versus if it were, you know, 3,000 units of a single family, we would probably have more of a significant issue, is that accurate?
Correct, so our, our demographer data shows us that the high-end apartments, which we keep seeing come in, we get one kid per 10 apartments. And so they're, right now, it's 2,000, you're pretty close, 2,900 apartment units over there, so we'd expect to get about 290 kids. So that is correct. So a house, we've, where demographer says we get about 0.47 kids per house. Part of that is we have a lot of high-end houses. You go to some other communities, have a lot of starter houses, that can approach two kids per house, more than two kids per house. But for us, it tends to be 0.47 kids per house, according to the demographer last November.
Okay, and then one more, on the, the forecast, which you mentioned, you know, as we look at the results from our demographer and our ever-changing landscape. One question that I posed or topic that I had thought of is, you know, say we approve a levy transfer now, the discussion that I kind of had thought about is what if we need to move it back? You know, that, that flexibility is, is possible, correct?
Yeah, by voter approval.
Thank you.
Board Member Fritchy?
Yes, thank you. My comments are more towards in line with what these guys have said, Roderick and Dr. Buck. The fact that we are behind, we are behind. If you look at the salary comparisons that we've got in our information, North Kansas City is about $2,200 ahead of us on beginning teacher salaries this year. That's not to say what they might do next year. And being on Team Lee Summit last year was a real education for me. And I'm looking forward to sitting on it again. But, you know, we really tried to shore up in the last few years what, what has happened in the past, as Dr. Buck pointed out, with our employees who had been frozen on the salary schedule. So our main emphasis the last two years has been trying to right a wrong and get it right, okay? So we are, we've gotten it right now, okay? So now it's time, after sitting at the same entry-level salary for three years, for us to push that. And I think we need to try to push it as much as we can without being frivolous to honor all of our staff members, not just our teachers, but all of our staff members, and try to get us up back into competitive territory. Now, when I first looked at all of this information and read through it the other day, I was thinking to myself, well, like Prop C ought to be that, that would, the Prop C waiver, that would probably be the easiest way to do it. Because of, when you're looking at the bonding capacity, I'm concerned about our future needs and our bonding capacity. So my caveat, though, is as long as we can have that bonding capacity to meet the needs that we're going to have in the future, to renovate our older schools, to add to the MIC Campus Summit Technology. And as long as we are responsible in that bonding capacity, I, I could see us actually doing a combination of a Prop C waiver and a 10, 10-cent debt levy. You know, a possibility of that. What, what would that do for us? Would that give us enough money to put that money into operating and salaries that we need and still maintain our bonding capacity?
Nathan has a dollar amount, if you did $1,000 to the base and like percent raise to all other scheduled bases, he has a dollar amount of what it would cost, including, including the benefit impact that has, because benefits go up when you do that.
Including extra duty as well, it's just over 3.6 million to do that for $1,000. And, you know, we do have four salary schedules, so that is based on the teacher's schedule and then a percentage if you went out across the others, which that, you know, comes through Team Lee Summit recommendation, it's not always equal, but that for our comparative purposes, that's really the best way to look at it. And then steps, as Dr. Buck mentioned, are around $4 million. That is very dependent upon how many retirees you have and who comes into those positions. So that number can, can waiver. So that number can, can waver on the lower side, but from a budgeting perspective, you really have to look at it from, if everybody comes back, it's $4 million.
And we do think, and we believe, you know, it's not decision time yet, that we're going to be able to go to Team Lee Summit and say, you have X amount of dollars, you can do a step and X amount of dollars to basis. All right, but this would be in addition to, to get us back up to that North Kansas City area. In order to do something significant, it would take us doing one of those models. And if you're interested, these guys have a, you know, they have a favorite one. You can ask them and maybe they'll be non-shy and share their favorite one.
What is your favorite one, gentlemen?
I'll, I'll share my favorite one.
Okay.
And I will tell you, each, each of these options will allow us to prepare our students for success in life. All right, so we have a lot of great options here. But to do something significant, as Dr. Buck has described, we have to go to the voters and, and ask for something, either that 10 cent or 20 cent transfer or that full waiver. I will tell you, to do something significant and to provide the most, the strongest financial position for the district, it is that, that waiver, that's, it's that waiver, Prop C waiver, and to maintain that bonding capacity. That option allows us to do something significant and puts us in the strongest financial position moving forward.
So that, that Prop C waiver you think would bring us the amount of money we need to raise salaries to a competitive level?
So, yes, giving Nathan's example of $1,000 to the base and a step, that's 7.6, 7.5 million dollars. You know, the, I believe it's about a $5 million increase in revenue with that Prop C waiver.
Four.
Four, four million dollar increase. And then, you know, we're currently obviously sitting on top of, you know, 30%, 32% balances. And so between the, the, the revenue we already have in, in the bank, if you will, as well as this increased revenue, that would give us everything we need to do something significant for our staff and maintain a strong bonding capacity.
And the reason we gave you choices, Nathan's going to share his favorite preferred, if he was of the seven board vote, he'll give you a different take.
Or maybe the same.
Are we talking of the three options here? Okay. I would, I, I think, first of all, Dr. Shelton's right. I mean, for the strongest financial position possible, you leave your debt service where it is and you ask for the Prop C full waiver, right? Because that, that creates the most revenue. We know that. From the perspective of a ballot issue and where we're at right now, you know, obviously a lot of factors economically, and we don't know where we'll be in April, but we know where we are right now from an inflationary standpoint. Moving, moving the levy from debt service to operating, I think when you're going out and you're selling it to your community as how you are going to approach this, then that is, you know, that's where I would land.
Could you repeat that?
Twenty cents.
The 20 cents?
Yes, the 20 cents. Sorry.
Okay, so the 20 cent levy transfer, if we did that, do you think that would still get us in a competitive salary territory?
Yes, without question.
Okay. So if we do the levy transfer, then we, for some reason, experience just massive growth and we don't have enough for future bonds. Could we then, we could then transfer back before doing a bond question, right?
Yes, we can. And our bonding capacity will go up because every time you have a massive enrollment growth, that probably meant you had massive housing growth and assessed valuation gets added to it. So if you have, you know, we're at, what, 2.6 billion assessed valuation? If we increase to 3.2 billion, those numbers go up because you can borrow 15%. So that's, in counting what you still haven't paid off of existing debt, it's part of that 15%. So those numbers go up. Right now, that's built on 3% growth. But I think if we saw massive enrollment where we had to buy, build new buildings at a faster rate than what we think we're going to have to do, we're going to also have a higher capacity.
Additionally, in conversations with the city, you know, we are seeing building permits for residential, but we're seeing a significant increase for building permits in commercial, which increases our assessed valuation greatly, as well as no, no students come with that increased assessed valuation.
And those who have been around for a long time have heard many of us say, you know, the assessed valuation balance of commercial versus residential, we needed more commercial balance. And I think all of a sudden, we're starting to see that.
Yes.
Yeah, I guess I just wanted to ask one last thing. Okay, so if we decided to do the levy transfer, we think that that will cover the, the salaries. And from my understanding, it is kind of reversible or if there's massive growth, like, it's, it's compensated for. So is there any downside at this point? Or is, is there anything that would prevent a problem in the future? Because we can, I mean, we can re-explore this, right, in a couple of years if we need to and make other questions and, and kind of move forward, right?
There's no downside, in my opinion.
Okay.
I don't know where it would hold us back operationally. I don't think it'll hold us back from our facilities, our needs. Just, we will just be, need to be more mindful as we move forward.
Okay. Thank you.
I don't think my second question was allowed at the time to get answered. What was the pathway? What did that look like? And, go ahead.
I just want to make sure I understand your, your, your question. Pathway moving forward with facilities or-
Pathway moving forward. So if the board has a consensus of what direction we want to go as a board, then what will take place and then how our stakeholders become involved in this process?
So the, what has historically happened here in the past is that CAC and, and Business Roundtable have conversations and then people start joining, and they don't have to be on those two. People start joining a committee and they're the ones to run a campaign. So they have to file with the NBC, just like you did as a candidate. And you have quarterly reporting, reporting your finances the week before election, things like that. So they would run it. As far as how it would be addressed in the salary schedule, my recommendation, because historically, our, our salary recommendations come from Team Lee, Team Lee Summit, is that you would have in March, because that's when we have to vote on that, you would have, hey, this is what we want our salary schedules to be. And this, if, if passes in April, because it'll be an April election, this is what we'd want to do in April. And so then if it passed and they would, we'd have to come back in April and say, it did pass, and then let's vote on new salary schedules that we just voted on in March. Update those. So my recommendation, and you guys can tell us to do something different, you could take complete ownership and you do it. But historically, Team Lee Summit's been involved in making recommendations for, for salary schedules. And so that's where I would want to start. But if you guys want to say, nope, seven of us want to do that, that's totally fine. But as far as campaigns, you guys will be invited to be part of a campaign to run a levy issue.
I'm trying to debate if I'm going to hold my comment. No, I'm going to say it. I personally would like to know how we're going to take care of our teachers before given direction. I'm just going to be honest in this matter. And so to your point, that is, are we going to take on that and disregard Team Lee Summit? I'm not necessarily saying that, but I kind of would like to know what direction or what thoughts are in mind that we know we're going to be doing for our teachers. Is it just the one step in the $1,000 increase space?
So I think, I anticipate we will be able to offer more to the base than what the thousand would come with 30,000, 3.6 million. So I anticipate we'll be able to do more regardless of a levy. But it won't be significant enough, is what I'm saying. So if we are going to have Team Lee Summit, we need to have direction. They start meeting next month and they only meet five, six times. So they need time to do this. So we need to give, we need to have direction so they do, they can jump in. And we need direction so we can start working the, the machine, getting up to ballot being approved and a committee going. So we need those, that time. So if, you're, we, you're right, we need no direction and we, and if you're okay with Team Lee Summit, let Team Lee Summit give the recommendation how to spend that dollar amount it would generate.
And then, but ultimately, it comes back to the board of approving if we like that recommendation or if we don't.
Ballot would be approved in December, January, salaries would be approved in the spring, yes.
Okay.
Salary schedules.
Okay. And then to board member Eslick's point, and I know that this was, I did not hear a yes or no, but her question was, is there not a way for us to do some reallocation of our current budget and meet the needs of what we're trying to do? I know that there, I know that in, in board questions, the answer was, well, we can do something, but it really would not be sustainable. But can there be some reallocations made?
So we are at 84.7% of our budget on salary and benefits. And if you look at our purchase services and supplies, which is our two other bu, big buckets out of salary and benefits, there's four kind of buckets. And operating budgets, they've been pretty flat for many years. The, you know, sometimes one fluctuates up or down. But it is typical to have that 80 to 85% of your, your operating budget going to salary and benefits.
Okay.
Where we can do steps and then when we can do things on the base is on natural growth of our local revenue because state is not providing it for us. And that's, that's, that's where, if we want to do something significant, we're going to have to ask for a difference in how we're allocating. So the big question is, if we do a 20 cent transfer, that's a reallocation from debt service over to operating. It's an influx of money in there.
Okay. One last question at this point. And that is, I know we're doing a lot of comparison of other districts and we're talking strictly on first-year, 15-year salaries, but what is the comparison of benefits? Because I know that we do very well of benefits for our teachers also.
We are, we are the number one in the metro in benefits. We, we have good benefits and that, we want to keep it that way, but we do have great benefits.
I can add a few questions too. And I think part of that around benefits, because you know, we look at the increasing cost of benefits every year. And I hear many times my board member Murdoch saying this just isn't sustainable, and I agree. So thinking about these options, not just around salary increases, but also knowing that we're going to have year over year.
Thank you. Knowing that year over year, we're going to have those increases in insurance benefits as well, is that kind of built into these models and this discussion also?
Well, we will always make long-range plans and we do build increases in health insurance. We know that there's a trend nationwide. We typically look at what we've done in the past as well as our current claims experience, but also look at that national trend. So as you look at that national trend of about 9%, we would build that into our projections moving forward.
Okay. And then I think the other question I have, and, you know, I'm really trying to force myself to look at this not just in a short-term view, but really in that five, 10, 15, 20-year view and thinking about potential, not just buildings that we may need to build, but land that we may need to purchase to build on, right? And even if we don't need a new school in the next five years, do we need to consider land purchases for those schools that we will need 10 and 15 and 20 years? I'd like to, to ask that as well.
That's the, so what, when we said, is there downside to transfer, that's the only one downside I have because I don't know how CPI is going to engage. So CPI has already said to us, they're willing to set aside land for us to buy for schools, right? And we know that CPI, or CPI, PRI.
Yeah.
PRI has supposedly about 25,000 people over the next 20 to 30 years going to be living in on what's now farmland. So that's probably six elementaries, one to two middle schools and one high school. Are they going to say, you know, 12 months from now, you have to buy all the land right now? Or are they going to say, you buy, we'll set aside land, you buy it when you're ready? We don't know. That's, they're, they're very close to the vest. So we don't know that answer. So that's the only caveat. But the good news is, we can shift our, what we're wanting to do in our building, current buildings, if all of a sudden they said, we want you to do it all in 2025. So our bond issue has to take care of that and maybe we put a couple of things off to 2030 that we'd like to do in 2025. So that's the good news there, but that, that's the wild card to me is PRI, they, they run their own ship. They're, they're one of the largest landowners in, in the country for a reason. And they, they play close to the vest.
And they, they do have a plan. And obviously, they haven't disclosed that plan to us, but they do, are, they are limited by the amount of land they can release for development and the frequency in which they release it. Once they release a, a plot of land, let's just say, you know, 1,000 acres, they cannot release another plot of land for, for another five years. And so that gives us time to plan and also gives us our time, our assessed valuation and an opportunity to grow so that once again, we can go back out for more bonding.
And I just want to let you know, they could release more. So that's a nonprofit now. They have to put it in a profit arm. What they're saying is if they do it every five years, it's better for them tax-wise on the profit arm. So I, I don't know the mechanisms for why that is, but that's what they've told us many times. So that they said they're going to try to sell chunks every five years to developers. And again, we don't know, are we going to be in the first chunk? Are we going to be, we don't know those answers yet. They want, want us to buy it all right off? We don't know what part of the land they're going to start. Again, there's 4,200 acres. You know, would they start in the commercial part? And Northern Park was mostly commercial. That would be beneficial to us if they started there. I know sewer and water is a bigger issue for them up there. But thankfully, the legislators and the governor just put in significant, many millions of dollars to help out with that project on the northland. So maybe the commercial comes, and that makes life a lot easier for us because that pays for a lot of other things and for services that come with the families later on and those housing developments. There's just unknowns. I just want to point out, just so, we were talking earlier about tax rates. We're fifth in our, our metro area here in, in operating levy. We're 13th in debt levy. And if we made a transfer of 10 cents or 20 cents, we'd be dead last in that 16 district comparison. And then we're sixth when you combine the two and, and levy. And our levy has been coming down over time. It was over six. It was $5.47 recently, so.
I just, I think a couple of things. And it, and I'm going to say this, and I don't want us to rob Peter to pay Paul. So I wouldn't want us to make decisions at this stage that impact future boards and, and future superintendents down the road. And so what might look the easiest for us may not be the best long-term decision. And I know none of us have a crystal ball in front of us, but I just am putting a lot of thought around that. When I looked at the slide, Nathan, thank you for updating this because that's what I was trying to wrap my head around. So understanding if we go for the Prop C full waiver and understanding that impact to that homeowner, and again, the median home price in our seven around the 255,000. And is that the assessed value? That's the assessed value. No, that's the market value, market value. But with that potentially, and you, what you mapped out here was with that full Prop C waiver, we'd be looking at a homeowner having an increased tax bill of $72.68. But we'd also be able to fund all of the things that we want to do for our staff from a salary perspective and competitiveness perspective. And we know that our community has been very supportive in the past of our district and our bonds and our initiatives. And it feels like asking our community to support the fact that we want to move from 37th in the state up to paying our staff more and being more competitive in that market, that seems like a pretty reasonable ask and question for our voters, especially given the number of districts that have the full waiver already in place. It's just a thought that I have around that. I do appreciate, though, you sharing that future bonds, we do have some targeted amounts. I think the unknown there is if we buy land in 2025, that delays some of the other things that we really want to do. So some of our elementary schools might not get those renovations and updates and upgrades, some of those, the STA, right, those projects, yeah.
So, so to give you an example, as I said, you know, that, right now, that we're projecting a $200 million bonding capacity in, in 2025.
Yeah.
On the books, about 130 million of projects that we want to include those five elementaries. It includes Summit Tech and the Innovation Campus. It includes some work at Lee Summit North. It includes some money for our, just our general capital work that needs to be done in the district.
Yeah.
So that 130 million dollars, that still leaves us 70 million. We could go out and get some additional bonds and buy, let's just say, 120 acres to build a high school. That's probably going to be about a, what, $2.5 million purchase? And so still, we have plenty of room if we have to buy land and still do future work in our buildings, even build buildings.
Even if we do the debt service transfer?
Even if we do the debt service transfer, yes.
Okay, thanks, thank you.
So, once again, I, I- So, once again, I, I, I'll, I'll say this again. From a financial position and condition in the district, the, the best thing for us to do is get that full waiver and maintain our bonding capacity. But even if we go with a debt service transfer of 20 cents and our bonding capacity comes down, we still have plenty of room in our bonding capacity to do the work we need to do.
Okay, thank you. And the nice thing about going with the full waiver is then we always have the full waiver. We don't have to, it doesn't roll back, it doesn't change. That's always then in place going forward.
That's correct. And Board Member Aslik, you know, you, you, you talked about protecting the taxpayer. The Hancock Amendment is there. So as, as future assessed valuations come in, as those AVs go up, that, that levy will be driven down by the Hancock Amendment.
Good point. Okay, um, Board Member Fritchie?
Yeah, um, I just wanted to say for those folks out there that when you raise salaries like this, that's a permanent expense. So, yeah, and so, so you have to have a source of permanent revenue for that to maintain that um, in the future. So um, I think the Prop C waiver, even though you're asking folks to pay more on their property tax, some you know, I can think of a lot of things we pay a lot more money for than for our schools and to get great teachers um, in our classrooms. So I think that the Prop C waiver would be, a full waiver, would be a good permanent way to pay for some permanent salary increases that we have. Bonding capacity is, is flexible, you know, which is what you've pointed out basically in this presentation is that there's some flexibility there. And if we want to go out later and um, we see the need to do this, we could, we could um, go with the uh, debt, you know, the 20 cent debt levy or the 10 cent debt levy at that point too. But if we can get the money to raise salaries at this point and maintain our bonding capacity, to me, that's the most fiscally responsible way to um, get the money we need for salaries.
Um, so I actually just wanted to highlight and bring more to a discussion, uh, Nathan's point about timing. Because he said it very quickly and we didn't really sit on it very long. But I think one thing that's really important as I kind of think about these options and we talk about, you know, some of you leaning towards Prop C. I, again, I think we're gonna be sitting in a year that's gonna be pretty hard on our taxpayers and we're gonna go back to them and ask for more. And what if they say no? When we could go to the position that says, we're just gonna move and it's a net zero increase in tax levy and we're gonna reallocate some dollars, we're gonna work with the budget that you gave us taxpayers. And then, you know, if we need to move it back around and we need to come to you for that Prop C full waiver, there's another narrative there to say, you know, we, we tried to make it work with the money that we have, but now we need, we need your help. And maybe that would be a little bit more palatable at that time after we've kind of taken that opportunity to do our fiscal response of, have that fiscal responsibility to um, try to make it work with what we've got. Because I just look at the timing of when we'd be asking our taxpayers to approve an increase in their, in their taxes. Um, and I know it doesn't seem like a lot of money and I, in, in principle to an individual personally, yeah, I, I agree with you, but I'm looking at the principle of the school districts coming back to the community to ask for money during a difficult year that's gonna be hard for some people. So I just look at the timing and I just want to put that out for consideration um, on what that's gonna look like to the taxpayers.
Member Sparks?
You said it better than I could have ever said it. That is a concern of mine. And it's even more of a concern, given that we would give direction and then pretty much the campaign starts versus even hearing from them to see if it's even something that they won't even, even consider, even if they, if even if they have an appetite for it. And so that's where I'm struggling. I'm struggling with not even knowing if our community even has an appetite for this. Um, and then us just kind of doing it and then the campaign just starts and we just all just get behind it. Unless there's an opportunity for us to say, okay, we could possibly say as a board to give everything that we want and to be able to have that flexibility. It goes to the CAC, it goes to the Business Roundtable, it goes to maybe other groups of stakeholders. And then if that discussions is on board too, then it would make it easier for me to say, let's go. But to not have that feedback, it's hard for me just to just say, yeah, let's go. So therefore I would be leaning more for um, where there would be no impact on our families with a tax increase.
Board Member Foley?
In regards to uh, Board Member Fritchie's comment about salaries being a, you know, long-term permanent expense. If we did a levy transfer instead of a Prop C waiver, would that cover those increased competitive salaries at a long-term?
Yes, we would, we would ask for what that would cover. So if, if you did a 20 cent and it was 5.4 million, we would ask that Team Lee Summit apply 5.4 billion to those salary schedules and then come to a recommendation to, to the board with that. And that would be in addition to what we could naturally do with our natural growth. Knowing that we don't have phase one or phase two to implement, we will have a little sum and we'll also be able to do a step because that's what we've been able to do in the past. So that would be an addition um, that we'll be able to do here.
Thank you.
So the, either of the shifts don't cover what we've talked about. We've talked about 7.6 million around salaries.
So the 4 million, we should be able to do with our natural growth that we already have. Um, and we should be able to do more than that with our natural growth that we should have. So this would be in addition to, so we could do something significant. The 4 million is just given a step. So the normal, you know, 2, 2 and 1/2% growth, um, depending on which salary schedule you're on.
Because I think Board Member Fritchie had mentioned considering the, going for the Prop C full waiver and considering the shift as well.
So we're gonna budget a step every year. So we know, we know um, that to make, to be competitive within the area, we're gonna have to at a minimum give a step. And so we're gonna budget that every year. So you can just plan on that. Really what we're talking about here is how much, how much do we want to add to the base? And to Dr. Buck's point, you know, from a good accounting, you only spend what you have.
Right.
And if we're able to generate 3 million uh, from a 10 cent move, then we're gonna put these, Team Lee Summit would have that opportunity to put 3 million onto that, onto that base. If it's 5 million, it's 5 million.
Okay, thank you. So um, any, any other questions? So I did hear Board Member Sparks, you mentioned that you would like to gather some feedback from the CAC Business Roundtable. But do we want to go around and, I don't know, do a final review of where people sit as board members? And then we'll get some feedback from the CAC as well? Go ahead, Dr. Buck.
So what I would encourage you to do is give direction now. You're not voting on a ballot language. If you start getting feedback between now and the time you have to vote a ballot language that says, whoa, we don't want to do this, then you just don't vote on the ballot language. But we need direction to gather energy around it. So I, I really encourage us to come out of this meeting tonight with us knowing you want option X, whatever X is. And then you'll get feedback um, throughout that process, including from Team Lee Summit, which a couple of you are on. You can go out and, and pay for like a patron inside or something like that. It's big dollars to survey, the, what they'll do is they'll call about 600 homes and, and complete a survey. Here's what I can tell you, they'll give you a data and it, it's not gonna match what your voters actually do. It really, it's the campaign that helps you get something across the board. You're just gonna hear what they know about cold. It's the campaign that helps you get it across the board.
Appreciate that. Board Member Murdoch?
Yeah, to Dr. Buck's point, I, I think that there's a difference between what we're trying to do as a board tonight and between what the community and stakeholder feedback means here. We can give direction on what we feel like as a board tonight. They can start moving with whatever that recommendation is. Understanding that CAC, Business Roundtable and Team Lee Summit then may have to come back with a different recommendation based on what that kind of feedback actually is. So um, I, I do think knowing, having been on CAC and sitting with those folks, they will be, if, if we were to say, and I'm not saying that this is what I am for, but if we were just to say, we want to do a bond transfer of 20 cents, that would be something that in the next CAC meeting Katie could help navigate with. This is one, this is where the board landed on this particular thing. We, they do value your feedback. What's some feedback that you have on that versus the possibility of maybe doing a Prop C waiver? CAC would be able to weigh in and we would be able to get that information well in time to make a decision on what we actually wanted to put on a ballot. And so I think that that's important that we, I, I would agree with Dr. Buck, we need to give that kind of feedback tonight.
I think that's, and I, maybe that's what you were alluding to, Board Member Sparks, yeah, as well. Great. Okay, so can we just go around? Board Member Aslik?
So I'm sorry, what are you asking from me? Like what I would like to see? Okay, okay.
Where you, where you land?
I, I would land on a debt, a levy transfer. Um, and I, I'm undecided on which value. In fact, I did have, can I ask like just a really quick question? Does it have to be 10 cents or 20 cents or could it be 15 cents? Okay, I just, I had to get that out. It was just a small thing. So I'm, I'm levy transfer.
Thank you. Board Member Murdoch?
I'm gonna have a longer comment because you guys know me. From a personal perspective, I'd like to see us do a Prop C waiver and a debt, and a debt roll. There's two things that I think get lost in the conversation. Number one is, is that we have an approved tax rate that we are rolling it back because of the waiver. And so I hesitate when we, and this is one of the things that we get caught up in unfortunately in the political climate that we're in, to say that we are increasing taxes. We're actually just getting rid of the rollback. To me, that is a significant point. I also respect though that people will, as a part of any campaign, is automatically gonna point to, I'm going to pay more, even though really you are paying what the approved tax rate is. And I do think that that kind of educational campaign would need to be made here um, as a part of this. And we'd have to do that even as a bond transfer, right? We'll have to be able to get that kind of information out. The second thing is, is that doing a Prop C waiver puts us in line not only with near the every other school district in the state. You could do a Prop C waiver and a 10 cent transfer and we end up still being lower than nearly all of the other major districts in our area. Blue Springs and Liberty and everybody, and our levy is still lower um, than those. And I do think to the people who highlighted benefits, that's gonna become incredibly important as we go forward here that a Prop C waiver rollback or whatever revenue stream you guys want to consider, right? Like, we're considering this tonight, there has to be some other kind of revenue stream because we can't spend 90% of, on salary and benefits. We know that. So um, we have to figure out what that revenue stream is to keep our salaries in line and or near the top if we're gonna continue to attract and retain the best teachers in the area. And so if we're gonna raise salaries by 4, $5,000 to the base and still be able to provide steps to people, in my opinion, you would need to do the Prop C waiver and a 10 cent transfer. I respect what everybody else is, is gonna say here. If I were to have to choose between something, um, I would do the Prop C waiver in a heartbeat first. Because I think that keeping the long-term um, projections for our debt service and our bonding capacity will become critical in 10 to 20 years.
Board Member Sparks?
A great point. Board Member Murdoch? My, I, I have one question. This is also a concern of mine. If we give a salary increase, what I also don't, well, this ain't really even a question, this is more of a comment. What I want to make sure it does not happen is that we are number one in salaries, but then we then lose our number one spot in benefits. So they see an increase, but then they lose that increase because they're paying more in benefits. And so I, I want to put that out there because that's not what I'm signing on for, okay? Just because I want to make sure that we are meeting our needs and because I know that Team Lee Summit is going to, and I'm part of that committee, is gonna have to ultimately bring it to the board of making sure that our teachers and staff is being taken care of, I am gonna go with the full waiver Prop C.
Thank you. Vice President Fritchie?
Mr. Murdoch said it much more eloquently than I could have, but that's actually what I was alluding to earlier in the conversation was the Prop C waiver and the, and the um, 10 cent debt levy to operating. And so I would agree with, with his comments on that. And I would go for the Prop C full waiver and the 10 cent debt levy.
Thank you. Board Member Marshall?
I guess I'm also on the, the full Prop C uh, train. But I am interested though in, in the, the debt levy also. Because we talked about this a lot even when we were in our leadership meetings and kind of um, long-range planning. And I think it was a consensus then that any opportunity that we have to increase teachers' salaries is an automatic win for the district because it's a direct correlation to drawing in talented teachers and um, therefore benefiting every student in the district. So any opportunity we have to do that, I think we should take advantage of that and at least explore it. Um, my only uh, concern in addition to the, the, making sure the benefits stay competitive as well is um, the, the education piece when we're talking to the community and relaying that information. Because this gets extremely confusing. I mean, even now, if I put this away and walk away for a week or so and come back, it, you know, it's uh, hard to wrap your head around a lot. So I would really like to see a robust educational piece when we're talking about communicating uh, from these different committees to our um, community members. If we gotta have multiple meetings, so we learned this a lot too during the, the boundary decision as well. So I, I would like to see a, a robust educational piece to this when we roll this out to get feedback um, from a variety of family members. So we gotta get creative on that part, but um, I would like to see the, the full Prop C. Campaign, the right word?
Yeah.
Yep.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you, Board Member Marshall. Board Member Foley?
I had a, heard a couple of concerns raised about not only the salaries but benefits. So could someone speak to that? If we did just a levy transfer, is there any concern that benefits packages would go down to compensate for the increase in the competitive salaries?
Not next, not in the next year or two, no. We, we are gonna see about a 10% increase in insurance is what, a little bit shy of it is what we're hearing. The good news is we're following that up every year where we didn't, so. But that, that's gonna be baked into what our growth is with our regular budget. And thus that just lowers what we offer without something significant happening um, for salaries. But no, that's part of the calculation we do with our internal growth. And we will know that number here pretty soon, what it actually was. Originally it was 12%, I think it's below 10% at this point. After some negotiations and then the insurance uh, uh, committee, I started to say company. Uh, committee will uh, um, look at that and say, do we want to keep things the way they are and then eat the entire percent or to grow? And just to let you know, today I, I was at St. Luke's East and I said, hey, it would really help us if you, they're the only hospital in our region that's not in our network. If they would play nice with our Blue Cross Blue Shield. And they said, we'd love that too. And, and the offer from CEO over there was, let's have lunch and see if we can invite Blue Cross Blue Shield. So that would help out immensely too with our percent. But that's a side. But no, that, this, this decision wouldn't impact that. We're gonna bake that in to what our, our natural growth is in AV. And again, that is coming all local because unfortunately, the state's been very flat. I can tell you a lot of the organizations uh, who advocate at the, at the Capitol are, are talking about um, SAT, which is what keeps it flat and trying to advocate for, hey, we need to do something. We're, we're averaging less than 1% growth um, and uh, funding per kid. And obviously inflation has been higher than one, less than 1% per year, so um, that needs to change.
Great question.
Okay, um, I guess for me, the, the thing that I would lean towards would be a levy transfer. If we're still gonna have competitive salaries, we're still gonna have competitive healthcare. Because I do think it would be difficult at this time to go before our community and ask them to pay more money. Um, and I know you can spin it different ways as far as education, but I still feel like, you know, even, even if you say it's only $72 for but I still feel like, you know, even if you say it's only $72 for some people, that is a significant amount of money. And there is a lot of unknowns as far as the other taxes that they're going to be receiving with the, you know, property and everything like that. I've heard concerns from the community just being, they feel like they're overtaxed. And so I just, I wouldn't want to play a part in that. I mean, I know we're going to have to do what we have to do as a board, but my preference would be a levy transfer so that we don't have to have our community incur that cost.
Did you have a preference between the two?
No, I think, well, I mean, I think 20 cents is fine or I even like the idea of 15 cents. I thought that myself. But I would love to know too, could we present these, all these options to CAC, Team Lee Summit and let them kind of kick around stuff and provide feedback as well?
That is our plan, yes. So but we're going to give a direction, say this is what the board's interested in. Do you have feedback to give a different direction? But we also want to have a dollar amount to start at the Team Lee Summit conversations too about if you had this much.
Great. Great conversations and great questions. Board Member Murdock?
I'm sorry. I'm channeling my inner Mike Allen here. I did want to just say that one of the reasons that I am not as keen on the bond transfer is the yo-yo effect that we might have on having to go back to voters consistently, not consistently, but if we needed to go back up, right back up to a dollar or a dollar seven and stuff like that, recognizing high construction costs, that kind of thing, I think could also play a role. And I totally understand what you're talking about here in terms of timing and stuff like that, that this might be a little bit harder sell for people initially. So I totally respect that. But I think we would need to be cognizant of the fact that we would, it would be possible even in the next few years to go right back and say, we needed to raise the debt levy. Now we keep having things come back up onto the ballot. So just a quick point. Because 20 cents, the bond transfer, I understand, will actually bring in more, you know, most likely than each year. So I mean, that would be something, you know, if based on feedback, that's what people wanted to see, that I get it, so.
Thank you, Board Member Murdock. And I think I'll weigh in. I appreciate everyone's thoughtful comments and investigation. I know many of us, I'm sure, have been digging into the data that's been provided and really learning and understanding what these options are, what the impacts are to our different stakeholders, especially that impact to our staff, that we know we need to take action. And I appreciate Dr. Buck and Dr. Shelton and Nathan, you all bringing this forward so that we can have this discussion tonight. So thank you for all of that. I definitely, being a thoughtful leader, thinking about the future of this district, past my participation in this district, I really, you know, as we've walked the halls in the new schools, in the renovated schools, I just get chills thinking about years and years from now. And I think, Dr. Buck, you even said this at East Trails when we were doing the signing of the beam. This school will live way beyond our lifetime. And that just is so meaningful to me as a board member. And so thinking where we need to take this district in the next 5, 10, 15, 20 years is where my thinking really goes. And understanding the PRI land and the unknowns that we look at, I definitely feel like asking our community to support our increases around staff salaries from the Prop C going to the full waiver as well as then the potential of maybe the 10 cent levy is where I land as well. Because I want to make sure that we're making the right choices and we've got that operating long view around that. But also, to your point, Dr. Shelton, as we're looking at those future bond initiatives that we're not cutting ourselves short now to be able to really make meaningful change 20 years down the road. So thank you, everybody, for a conversation around that. So we'll close out. It looks like more of the board is leaning to the Prop C and a levy combo. Did I get that right? Prop C?
Yeah, I think you're more on the props, yeah.
Okay. So we'll kind of get this information together. We'll present it, discuss with the CAC and Business Roundtable, get additional information and then move forward from there.
Can I just add, so she threw, we throw out a potential, it's not a vote for like actually what we're going to do, but so she threw out one, a full Prop C waiver and a 10 cent debt levy. Can we just do a temperature check? Is everyone supportive of that? So that's what our starting point would be?
I think that that's, we had more towards the Prop C, I think. And I'm supportive of.
I think we had three Prop Cs and debt levy.
Yeah, we kind of were right in the middle. So I think you'd be better off, Dr. Buck, to stay with the, just the Prop C waiver for right now as a part, if I judge that correctly from everybody.
That's what I gathered as well, yeah. Five of us who definitely said Prop C waiver.
And three of us.
And three of us leaned toward the 10 cent levy transfer, debt.
I think, Dr. Buck, what really you might be asking, and you can say you're totally wrong, is we really are telling you we want to try to hit somewhere in that $5.4 million mark. You know, we're in the $5 million mark, right? Because that's what the 20 bond transfer would be. But then that also would be essentially what the waiver would accomplish too. So I apologize if I'm speaking out of turn there.
Board Member Foley?
Okay, so with the language, if we are talking about going with Prop C and levy transfer, would that be two separate ballot issues?
Yep, voters would vote twice. And you have the sample language that Stifel provided from other districts on each one of those, but there would be two separate items. And so you could see one pass and one fail. You could see both fail, you could see both pass.
Thank you.
Good question. All right. Well, thanks, everybody, for the work tonight. We've all done hard work and appreciate your time.
Before we dismiss, I just, just for clarification sake. So we're expecting to hear from, feedback from CAC, Business Roundtable. Is there anyone else that you can think of?
I would think Team Lee Summit. We want to get their feedback too. And then it'll be either December or January you'd actually vote on language. So we'll have an agenda item in December, just to be safe. Because while there's a lot of pre-work for our campaign committee, their big time is the eight weeks before the actual election. But there's a lot of work in fundraising because they're going to have to fundraise as well for their committee work. So we could do, you used the word education. The district could do a lot of education events. We cannot advocate though. We cannot pay for anything, any materials to advocate. We can't have anything to say vote yes. We can do a lot of education, which is kind of what we're trying to do here today too. We can do those pieces.
Can I make a recommendation? The podcasts that Katie kind of has done with other things, if we could possibly use that as an avenue of at least breaking down of understanding what we're trying to.
I would assume Speaker Series would be involved, yes. I know September and October are already spoken for, but yes.
So, Dr. Buck, will we do a work session topic in December ahead of the vote? Agree?
If that's what board leadership, when we work tomorrow, there's a lot of things we want to get in work session.
I think we want to talk before we vote. Do we want to talk before we vote?
Yes.
Okay, I'm seeing some yeses. Okay. Board Member Marshall?
Yes, that was what I was going to bring up as well. If we could have some sort of a sight picture on, like to Roderick's question, Board Member Sparks' question, on the game plan, instead of getting to December and now we have a work session with all these different things and we're like, wait, we didn't talk about that. That's not clear. So we can kind of have along the way, whether you bring that back with Team Lee Summit updates, but something every month, whether it's just something correspondence. So we know along the way. So that way, you know, us still staying in our helicopter, right? If we know that some things aren't what we thought they were, we can say, wait a minute, hold on a minute and kind of rudder steer it back. I would appreciate that information along the way.
I think that's a great suggestion.
So board leadership, let's talk about that when we meet this week. If we want to do that regular meeting, start in September, board meeting, or do we want to do that in a work session, take five, 10 minutes, however you want to do it.
Yep, that sounds great. Yes. It'll be in the minutes. Is that okay? Okay. Great. All right. With that, we'll adjourn our meeting. So thanks very much and have a nice evening.